I'd like to reconvene the meeting at this time. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask for approval of the agenda or any amendments to the agenda. Could I get a motion for approval? Dennis, Pam second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. At this time on our agenda, we have an opportunity for public comment. We would ask that you come to the table, that you have filled out one of the sheets, that you state your name, limit your remarks to three minutes, and remember that the intent of public comment is this is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting, and we ask that certain levels of civility be observed. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board?
My name, Debbie Hibbard, 7341 Lakeside Road, Ontario, New York. I'd like to give you, the board, some things to consider before approving the personnel action tonight. I will follow the protocol of not using names or titles. However, the names of those who are being recommended to you are public knowledge since they're included in the Board Packet on the school website. I'd like to ask that you not be a rubber stamp tonight. Take a stand for what is right. Amen the agenda. Someone make a motion to pull the personnel action and then discuss publicly the pros and cons of voting yes or no to approve an outspoken, negative, loud critic of our schools. Tell myself and the rest of the community the answer to the big question, why vote yes? Because even though you may not hear from many others, the word on the street, in the hallways, in the grocery store, and the three phone calls from OP employees today to my phone are that this is just a political payback for the funding of many of your campaigns. Or maybe the board is feeling threatened by yet another lawsuit from this individual. What is the message you're sending to each and every employee, volunteer, parent, student, and community member with a yes vote in tonight's personnel action? Many of our employees were the target for slander and defamation of character in the last couple of years. Did you think to ask any of the teachers or other employees whether they thought approving this person was a wise idea? Did you ask any of those individuals who were the targets of the attacks on social media? Isn't it a conflict of interest to hire someone who is taking legal action currently against the district? Have you sought any legal advice about hiring someone who is suing the district? The message I believe you're sending is loud and clear. You're willing and able to continue to reward bad behavior and are willing to forget all the damage this person has done. I know this will be interpreted by some to be just a bitter rant by a former board member. However, I assure you, I am not alone. I am just one of the very few who are willing to put in writing and on video and use my voice to share what so many of us are thinking. Lastly, thanks to each of you for being willing to serve our community and our students in what I know all too well is a very thankless job. And thank you for listening. I do have the questions in writing I'll give to four.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public who would like to comment?
Susan Brown, 7518 Nickerbacher Road. I am concerned over the fact that you have reduced the number of public comment sessions to one. As someone who comes to a fair number of these meetings, I don't always get the chance to fully read the Board Packet before I get here, and the presentations of people are not in the Board Packet often. So the opportunity to speak to them or ask questions regarding them at the end of the meeting became a valuable opportunity for me to share my ideas and thoughts about what was going on in the district. By reducing the public comment to only for the meeting, you've reduced the opportunity for the public to comment upon the actions of the Board, and I do not appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have anyone else who would like to address the board?
Jerry Mailer, 6106 Lincoln Road. I'd like to start out with, first of all, thank you for the copies of the presentations that will be given tonight, that are available tonight. Unfortunately, as I've commented to most of the board members, getting those as part of the Board Packet in advance would be greatly beneficial. There is no real time to look them over or comment meaningfully. I think that goes to Ms. Brown's comments just a second ago. I would like to make a couple of comments regarding tonight's agenda and reserve funding. Specifically, I don't know what the action is on the reserve funding policy. I would believe it's to include an amendment to the term "biannual" from regular. Just as a technicality point of contention and nitpicking, biannual, according to Webster's, is either every two years or twice a year. I would suggest that you not use the term biannual, but either pick one, twice a year or every other year. And also, as the Board goes through their reserve funding review tonight, the report that was not available ahead of time, as we've asked for multiple times, I want to pay attention to our policy, and it's specifically item five. The report should include optimal funding levels for the reserve as well as the conditions under which the reserve assets will be utilized. I think when you go through the presentation, I've had 30 seconds to review it, you will see a couple of places where they talk about the optimal level. It never mentions when we use it. We budget for every one of these categories in their entirety and where there is no plan for how to use the reserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Are there any other public comments?
Jerry Champagne, 609 Jacobus Road. Obviously, I know a lot of people sitting at this table. I was going to kind of let you guys run your show and do your thing and not be a nitpicker, but after what I saw in the newspaper, I'm a little angry. I remember all of you sitting on this side of this very table when there was an incident with our children. I want to know why I didn't receive a phone call. I don't care what your reason is. All I want to know is why I didn't get it. There was a bus accident with 34 children on that bus. I had phone calls from people asking me, if my kids are okay, what's going on? My kids travel 350 every day, and I don't know why you don't think it's important enough for us to receive a robo-call to tell us that our kids are okay and that those other parents, that the kids were on the bus, would receive a phone call from the district to further explain what was going on. That was crappy. Now, I don't know if you're protecting your friends. I don't know what your deal is, but that was wrong. It's ridiculous. Second thing, on your agenda item, you're looking at bringing Patty in, and I already know what the answer is.
Please, no name, sir.
Okay, what's on the agenda?
I understand it's on the agenda.
We all know who you guys are here for, and you know who your friends are. We all know who we know. You also know why people were asked not to be here. You don't care about the kids in this district. I'm not going to speak for all of you, but I know who I can speak for. It's ridiculous. This is utterly ridiculous. So, you're giving her a payoff already, now you want to put her back to work. Now what? She gets burned, how much more are you going to pay her? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? If not, let's turn to board member comments. Do we have any board members who wish to comment at this time? Pam?
I just wanted to let everybody know that Ron and I attended a NISP leadership conference this past Friday in Rochester, and even though it was pretty much targeted for presidents and VPs, I found as a board member, it gave me valuable information just on how, you know, the Board should run, responsibilities, and so I was really appreciative that I got to go. And also, I attended the OE and the OP bash on Friday, and that was a lot of fun. Good to see smiling kids and parents.
Are there any other board comments at this time? Dennis?
With Ron and Pam, I attended the new school board orientation. It was pretty good. Learned one thing, there's a lot to learn, but I also learned that there's a lot of great people out there to help us, a lot of great resources. I found that we have a lot of challenges as a school board ahead of us, too, especially financially with the cap adjustments, having a cap on our taxes, all these unfunded mandates that are put in front of us. So it's, makes our job pretty challenging. Also, I did learn a very interesting fact, that our kids are going to be facing one heck of a challenge coming up. China has got more children in their high learning programs than the United States has in people. So that's well over 300 million people that they have in their top schools. So, that was pretty interesting. So we have a lot of work to do ahead of us. All the laws, there's so many of them, and it's quite boring, but I guess we've got to learn them. That's it.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any other board member comments or reports? Jim?
Just to clarify, sometimes, this will be the first time we're seeing some of these reports because there's things that we may ask for at the agenda-setting meeting when we're deciding what we're going to have, and they have to put the reports together. So there's some types that can be ready ahead of time and be on the, with the Board Packet, and there's other ones that they're putting together right to the last minute. So this is the first time we're seeing it. We'll look it over, and then, even with the public, if they have any questions on it, could bring it to the next board meeting, as well as after we look it over, and we might discuss some things tonight on those. So just wanted to clarify that part.
Any other board member comments?
I just would like to apologize for, I know we're going to have a beautiful weekend for homecoming, and I apologize for not being able to attend this weekend. I have two weddings, and one is out of town.
Thank you. Any other board member comments?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, last, at the last meeting, the Board had extended a thank you to Bob and his team for the FPP, the project, the facilities preservation project that was going on. And we had thanked his team, knowing that they had worked through the long weekend right before school started, and we saw the fruits of their labors on opening day. And we specifically thanked Bob and his team for their hard work. What, unfortunately, what I think occurred was that there were some employees that misinterpreted that as us thanking Bob's team for their hard work. It was misinterpreted as us thanking the construction team for being four weeks late or how late they are now. So I just wanted to clarify that, that the Board was very specific on thanking Bob and the employees that were putting the extra effort in. As for the construction team, you know, we'll thank them later when it's all done. But there were a couple of things that went into them being late. Now, we certainly don't want to make too many excuses, but it wasn't quite as easy as they're not done on time. There was over $200,000 worth of added projects that we put into the schedule that they didn't know about in advance. And then further, there was the, we didn't know there was asbestos, so when they started tearing windows out of these ancient buildings, they started finding more asbestos. So that was a huge delay. And there was one other thing that I made a note about. Oh, and then the concession stand. With the weather that we had, the concession stand issue was a huge issue, where we actually diverted some resources to get that done on time, which we should note, the construction team and our architects and some of the other companies involved actually donated some of their labor and increased some of the work they were doing to get that right and get it done on time. So again, I just wanted to clarify that we certainly weren't thanking the construction team for being late. We were thanking our employees for getting us as far along as we were, and that there were some notable reasons why we are delayed. So anyways, wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Phil. Any other board member comments? If not, we'll turn to the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Ron. We have four superintendent reports for you this evening. We have some student recognition. 22 Wayne Central High School senior graduates have earned AP Scholar Awards. Now, they're too numerous to repeat here, but we want people to know that they are on our website, but we did want to show the slide and congratulate all those students that participated in the AP program and won those honors. So thank you to those, and congratulations to those students and their parents. Next, we're going to have, I just want, I'm going to modify this, our report schedule a little bit. We're going to talk about the reserve fund report, and then we're going to talk about the reserve fund regulation, and we'll do the certification for lead teachers at the very end, just so we won't be bouncing back and forth. So this time, I'm going to ask Greg to walk us through our reserve fund report.
Thank you, and good evening. Tonight, we'd like to share with you some information concerning our reserve funds. This has been an ongoing process for us. We've included this information in our budget development ever since the first Comptroller's Audit came out. We have this information available on the website. In our quest to continue to improve, tonight, we share with you, in a little bit different format, information concerning all of our reserve funds, consistent with what our policy calls for. And it's, the discussion I had with the superintendents, we felt it was appropriate, now that we've been through our audit, to present to you at this time of the year. And then once again, once we get into the budget development, we'll be talking about the reserve funds and their levels as part of budget development. And you should all have a copy of the presentation at your place. So the first one is the tax surchargeary reserve. This was a reserve fund that was set up in 2014. It was actually in response, as part of our corrective action plan, from the first Comptroller's Audit. The district had a history of using our liability reserve to pay any tax surchargeary cases. In the first audit, it was noted by the comptroller that a better practice is to set up a tax surchargeary reserve for that purpose. So in response to that, we created this in 2014, and you can see that its purpose is to pay any judgment or claims that come through the tax surchargeary process. Tax surchargeary is when people challenge their assessment, and then there's, you know, there could be a legal proceeding that decides it. There's a negotiation. I know there's a lot of different ways that it gets resolved. As far as interest earnings for this reserve, there was $137 earned in the 2013-14 school year for that fund. There were no capital gains or losses from any of the investments for that fund. Our audited balance as of 2014, $232,011. And our projected usage for 2014-15, we do currently have an outstanding tax surchargeary case with Tractor Supply in Ontario, and the district has partnered with the county and the town in defending this case, and it is not resolved yet, but our potential liability is the 217404. So basically, that if the case gets resolved the way we believe it will, they'll do a refund, and we would have to give them back portions of their property taxes that they've paid because their assessment was higher than it should have been. And if that occurs, then we would come back to the Board and request authorization from the Board to be able to pay that claim out of the reserve fund. As far as upcoming fiscal year funding, we don't anticipate any additional funding required at this time. The interesting thing about this reserve is you're not supposed to put money in there until you have a claim. Unfortunately, sometimes that timing is, you know, even though it goes through the court process, sometimes by the time you find out you have a claim, you don't have the ability to fund the reserve, but that is the way it's legally set up. And there's also a legal requirement that once the claim is paid, once a claim is paid, then you can't leave money sitting in that reserve. So if this were to go as planned today, at the end of the year, we would be recommending to you to take the balance, anything over the 217404, and move it out of that reserve to stay in compliance with the rules for this reserve. And if you have questions, just feel free to ask me as we go through.
Just a quick one. On the Tractor Supply, did they readjust their assessment now, and have they lowered it?
They haven't yet. It's not yet been decided, Dennis.
Okay.
But, you know, they have an assessment set by the town, and they filed a claim believing that their assessment is overstated, and they've provided evidence showing that. Our side has had an independent appraisal come in and look at the assessed value, and then the parties all get together and kind of, sometimes, like I said, there's a negotiation. If the parties can't come to agreement, then it goes to court, and the court will decide the proper amount.
But they haven't, okay.
They have not restructured it yet. That would be at the end of the process. So the second reserve tonight is our capital reserve, and the purpose of this is to finance all or part of capital improvements or the purchase of specific equipment. Our current reserve was established July 1st, 2004. This reserve requires voter approval to create it, as well as to spend money out of it. The interest earned in the last school year for this reserve, $1,769. Once again, we had no capital gains or losses on investments for this reserve. We show you here the audited balances from 2011 to the present, and when the reserve was created, it was set at a threshold of $5 million. So legally, once the district had put $5 million in, we cannot contribute any more to this reserve. Even if we take money out, you cannot use it as what they call a rolling reserve years ago. That used to happen, and the Commissioner of Education ruled against that, that you can't do that. So if you remember in our, I'm sorry.
Can you accumulate the interest on the reserve?
You can. You can. So the reason it's over, you see the 2011 balance over $5 million, is we funded the reserve at $5 million, and then that money wasn't used right away, and it was invested. So you are allowed to leave any interest earnings from those investments in that fund, even if it exceeds the threshold. You just cannot contribute, continue to contribute other district money to it. And our current facilities improvement project called for $4 million of that reserve to be used for the current capital project, so that money was transferred out. Our projected usage for 2014-15 is none. And as far as upcoming fiscal year funding, there's been discussions, they started last year at the Audit Committee, and they're ongoing about what to do in the future because legally, we cannot contribute any more money to this reserve. We could spend the existing money in it, as long as it's for the reason that the voters approved the spending when it was created, but it restricts you from adding any more money to it. So I know there's been discussion with the Board about future capital needs of the district and protecting ourselves, and how are we going to move forward with that. So I believe that we'll be coming back to you with a plan requesting that we add the creation of a new capital reserve as a ballot on our proposition in May, and to set that at an appropriate dollar amount, which the Board will help determine what that is based on the discussions of capital needs moving forward.
When we do that, can we roll that $1.3 million over into it? So?
Yeah.
I already got like a head start on the whole deal.
Yes, if you word the proposition appropriately, and we've done it in the past, the wording allows us to take any unspent money from the current reserve and move it to the new reserve when it's created.
Now, in 2011, it shows $5.4 million. Was that the year that we started this with the $5 million, and we earned $423,000? Over what period of time?
It was actually created, Dennis, in 2004.
Okay, so that's why there's such a
That's why there's that much money, because it was invested, right.
Because I seen last year, we only earned $2,000.
Right.
It's like, how did you go from $400,000?
Well, the interest earnings have gone way down because of the economy, and back when it was first created, you know, the rates, we were getting seven or eight percent on our investments, maybe even 10 percent. So, and the money, while we weren't using it, was accumulating.
Right, it was building money.
And it's still, the accumulation helps benefit, you know, the taxpayers.
So Greg, if we were to have another capital, when we roll this in, is the maximum still $5 million?
Depending on whatever you, the Board decides to set the threshold at, Carla.
Well, why was this one at $5 million?
That was determined back in 2004, based on the capital needs of the district at the time. And there's always a concern that if you set the number too high, that you scare people. So the Board
It's a kind of state law thing.
No, no. No, it's actually a local decision.
But because you can't exceed $5 million?
The state, once the voters approve it at $5 million, then law says you cannot go pass voter approval without creating a new one.
The difficulty with the capital reserve, as I understand it, is once you put the money in there, it can only be used for capital reserves. So most districts err on the side of putting as little money in there as they can to meet their needs.
I find it very interesting that you can't have a rolling capital reserve, so you can't keep adding money to the same one. Yet, we can create a new one and roll the money in the old one into it, which to me, sounds like a rolling reserve. Buy another name.
Buy the voter.
Well, we would, assuming we would ask the voters to approve that we wanted to add capital.
The original rolling reserve, you didn't have to ask the voters again. So if you, if you had a $5 million reserve, you could continually keep, put money back in there up to that $5 million without asking for authorization again and again.
For Greg, that I would pass.
So, and again, just for Pam, just a quick clarification. I want to make sure everyone realizes, you have the ability to set that reserve amount, but once you set it, you can't go over it. Okay? So that's how that works. And as Ron said, you want to be cautious in determining that because the capital reserve is one that's pretty restrictive. Once you have money in there, it can only be used for capital projects typically tied to your five-year capital improvement plan that happens every five years. And also, if the Board should decide on a major facilities project, that would have to be worded in the resolution prior to the approval of our community. And also remember that these capital reserves, when we, not only do we have to have approval to create the reserve, when we go to spend it, we have to have voter approval again to spend the money. Make sure everyone is clear on that. So we got about $1 million, I think, four left. If we were to use that for something, we would have to go back, identify what it is and go back to the voters for approval to use that.
And just for clarity, I did receive a couple of questions on this, so I thought it would be helpful if I responded to them right now. One of the questions I got from one of our community members was, the district built up their reserves previously for the failed capital project vote of 2010. That was the almost $50 million capital project vote put before the voters. So the question was, since that money was built up for that reason, why wasn't the money put into the capital reserve even though the project went down? And the answer to that was basically what I've already shared with you, that the threshold that the voters approved at the time they created reserve was $5 million. So we legally could not put the money in there. A second question that came up from that was, the money that's not in there, does it take voter approval to spend it? And my response was, no, only the capital reserves take voter approval to spend and create. The other reserves can be spent through Board authorization. And then the third question was, what is the current balance, which is showing up on the screen? That's correct. And thank you for that segue, Mr. Prinsen, because the very next one is the bus reserve. And actually, the bus reserve is a form of capital reserve. We just break it out separately for people so that they understand. But the purpose is clear, to purchase vehicles for transportation. This, our current bus reserve was established in 2010, and it was established at the limit of $5 million or five years. And the interest earned on that reserve in the last school year was $2,470. Once again, no capital gains or losses. You can see the balances there from 2011 forward. 2014-15 is actually the fifth year of the reserve, and even though we're going to be using, and we actually have already used, 606-500, because we purchased our buses for this we purchased our buses for this school year, we always get them at the beginning of the year, and we've paid for those, there's still about a million two left in that reserve. Once again, we'll have to put a proposition on the ballot to create a new bus reserve, because this one has expired at the end of the school year. And, once again, the Board has the ability to set that threshold at whatever level they feel is appropriate. So, you can see that in the upcoming fiscal year funding piece, that, you know, we'll be recommending to you to, to create a new bus reserve at whatever level the Board sets fit.
Now, when this was started, it started at $5 million?
This one was, this one was set at $5 million, Dennis, and...
And so, how long has it taken us to use what we've, you know, to use this reserve?
Five years.
Five years.
Five years. Yep.
What's a bus cost? Like, the average big bus?
Uh, they're now about $115,000, I believe, Carla, for the big ones. The smaller ones, I believe, are about 60.
We buy, what, four?
We buy four, five large ones, and typically, two small ones. We also purchase our other vehicles for transportation. We purchase the, some cars that are used for when students are injured and can't go up the bus stairs. So, we buy those out of here, and then eventually, we turn them over to the Drive Red program.
Okay. But like, tires don't come on?
No. No, this is just for capital. Tires would be an expense item.
Now, when they sell a bus, or when they retire a bus, they obviously sell it, does that money go back into this reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we have not exceeded the $5 million.
Right, okay.
Interest earnings could stay in there, but that would be adding additional money. So, when we funded it, we funded it not quite at the $5 million level, and we have put in the sale, the proceeds of buses we've sold since the reserve.
Now, you don't do them as trade-ins, do you?
Actually, Dennis, that's a year-by-year decision. We look at what they offer us. There was one year in the past five where we did trade them in, because it was a better deal than selling them outright, but typically, we do a sealed bid and we sell them outright. That's been the best value that we've gotten.
What do we usually get for an old bus?
Um, boy, it, Carla, it'll range, depending on the mileage and the condition of the bus. I would say on the low end, maybe $1,500 to $5,000 or $6,000.
Really? $1,500? That's it?
Yep. Well, depending on the condition of the bus. I mean, most of the time, the engines are good, but the bodies have...
Rusted away.
Yep.
How many years did the rotation then?
Our big buses, we look to replace every 10 years, and the small buses are on a five-year replacement cycle.
Why? Because they go more?
Because they go, they have more miles on them, they go more, and we have less of them. So, they accumulate the miles faster than the large buses do.
So, if we create a new bus fund?
Yes.
And then we decide to set the number at $3 million? Can we, at, at that point, can we, if we have, if we had other reserves that were, like, can we, we can't pull money out of reserves to back build a new bus reserve, correct? If you have money in the, actually, reserve, actually, school reserve, there's a $7 million, we've been told, hey, that should be around $2 or $3 million, we can't pull money out of one reserve. Or can we, because we're asking voters?
Technically, you can, but there's, I believe there's a specific process. The Board can review reserves and determine if they are appropriately funded, or if they're under or overfunded.
And I only ask that...
So, I'm sorry. So, if, if you were determined that one of the reserves was overfunded, you could, by resolution, and, and this part I'd have to clarify, but either dissolve the reserve and then recreate it at a small or appropriate level, and then, any extra money would be, would go into the general fund, and then it could be, by Board resolution, moved into a different, a different reserve.
I, I only ask not to get into politics of reserves. I ask that, because if we want to start, we want to fund a capital project, and then we want to fund a possible, or, I'm sorry, a capital reserve, and then a possible reserve, and we put these on the ballot in the public, and we're asking for $5 million, we're going to $3 million there, it, it can start to be, it can be a shocker, you know, sticker shock to the voters, so that's what I ask the, just, if we could lessen the blow by moving some of our reserves if we have.
It could be very taxing.
Let me just comment on that, Phil, because you, you hit something right on that, on the head. And Greg and I have been talking about this, and what we'd like to bring to the Board at a future date is a review of our reserves. And, and, and we're doing some research to find out exactly if and what we can do on, as we, and obviously, we're going to be reviewing reserves for the rest of the day. So we're going to take a look at those reserves as per our audit as well, and say, if there are reserves that we believe are overfunded, we'll identify that for the Board and make recommendations that possibly those, some of those reserves can be brought down to a, a more realistic level, and then used to start, kickstart, or fund, partially fund our, our capital reserve, or even possibly the bus reserve. Those would be two areas that we would be looking at. So, it's a good point, and, and I just want the Board to know that it's, it's something that we're, that we're talking about as we, as we move forward. And part of this presentation is the start of that, so you can start to see where these reserves are at and what we believe is appropriate.
Greg, what do we spend this year?
The 606-500. Um, I think it was about $560,000, Tim, if I'm not, and then that's, that's by memory, but I could get you those numbers if you want them. I just don't have them, but it's...
We have roughly three years left.
Yes, but, but based on what, but the reserve expire, you know, if you, there's two ways that the reserve expires. Either if you expend the entire $5 million, or if it's gone five years, and '14-'15 is the fifth year. So even though we'll have money left, Ron, we, we've run out of time on this reserve.
Look, when you do a new reserve, you don't fund it all that year. Is, is it done over a period of time? You know, like, say we want to do $3 million on our reserve this year, and we put it up for public vote. Does that mean this year, we put $3 million into that reserve, or does it happen over three years? Or, I mean, how do we build that reserve back up without it being a burden on the public?
That, that's a great question, and I think really how you do it is, is a big factor in our financial stability. This particular reserve here, being created in 2010, was the year that our vote went down, and we had money built into that budget to get the reserve levels up to $18 million, because the project called, the plan called for us using 17 and having $1 million left. So, when the voters approved this reserve in 2010, and then that, and then at the '09-'10 school year, we were in strong financial position, so we just about fully funded this reserve in one shot. That doesn't always happen, Dennis, it's kind of a case-by-case basis. So...
So, we can't fund it over a period of time?
Yeah. Yeah, there's no, there's no restrictions or limitations on how fast or how slow you fund it. Just on the dollar amount.
Just on the dollar amount. But, now you said you can't add, you can't add anything over that five?
You can't add anything over the voter authorized amount.
But you can add.
Yeah, and there's different ways. You can do it with, with most reserves, if there's money left at the end of the year, if the district has some unspent funds, that's one way to fund a reserve. Or you could also factor it right in during your budget process. And I think in the last Comptroller's Report, what they said was, if, if the district, one of the recommendations was, if the district plans on funding reserves, they should do it in transparent fashion and, and make it known to the public during the budget process. So there are ways to fund some of the reserves through the budget process, if, if that's the most appropriate way.
Rather than just putting leftover money into something?
Right. Right. The next reserve is the Workers' Comp Reserve, and the purpose is the payment of compensation benefits, medical, hospital, or other expenses authorized by Article II of the Workers' Comp Law, and expenses of administering the self-insurance program for the district. The district's in a self-insurance program with the school districts and Wayne Fingerlakes BOCs, with a consultant that helps oversee it. Wayne Fingerlakes administers the plan. BOCs II does the actual claims administration. This reserve was established June 30th, 2012. Interest earned for the '13-'14 school year, $1,008,14. Once again, no capital gains or losses. Audited balances, you can see there from the beginning of the reserve in 2012 to 2013, 2014. And you see a, a big jump in, in, in the balance there, but our workers' comp costs have gone up, you know, they're tied in with the medical industry, so our costs have gone up significantly over the past few years. So, 225 was a starting number for us, but our projected usage for '14-'15 is $145,000. Our expense for that will actually be more than that, so we are not fully funding the expense of the workers' comp for the district. We're doing a partial funding. And as far as upcoming fiscal year funding, we believe none is necessary, as the reserve holds 4.31 years of workers' comp costs. And when we created our corrective action plan for the reserves, we targeted a five-year expenditure level. So you can see this one falls within the five-year expenditure level. Employees Retirement Reserve, this allows us to use this reserve for the payment of retirement contributions, which are defined as all or any portion of the amount payable to the New York State and local employees' retirement system. The date this was established for Wayne Central, June 23rd, 2005. Interest earnings for '13-'14, $6,788. Excuse me, no capital gains or losses. You can see the audited balances there. Currently, it's at 5.5 million. Our projected usage for the school year is $350,000. If you remember, at budget time, we projected using $850,000, but we ended up last year in a more favorable financial, our financial position was more favorable at year-end, so we appropriated all the leftover money back to the taxpayers. So, it allowed us to use less of our reserve than we originally planned for, and that's why the Board had approved the revised revenue schedule in August prior to setting the tax levy. Once again, future funding, we don't believe any is necessary, as the reserve holds 4.86 years of employee retirement costs, and the target amount for this reserve has been established at five years of costs. It's interesting to note that we did get some information, and the rate is going from 20.1 down to, I think it's the high 18, so we are going to hopefully start seeing some relief in the pension area. And it won't be exactly the difference in the percentage rate, because you're applying a lower percentage to a higher base of salaries, because you're going on in years, but still, it'll, it'll start to give us some relief. Probably about eight or nine years ago, we were paying less than 1% to the employers' retirement system for our support staff. And through the crisis, the state's fiscal crisis, you know, the, obviously, the pension funds are heavily invested, and so when Wall Street took a dive, so did the interest earnings on the pension funds. So when they weren't getting interest earnings, the contribution rate had to be raised to offset that, because the level of need didn't change. So, but we...
Now, why does this one keep growing?
Because our, our costs, Dennis, have grown attributable, attributable in this reserve. So we felt it was a, a good place to put our money, because we're paying 1 point, and don't quote me, $1.7 million a year in, 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 in entire retirement expenses for ERS. So, we can't fund more than what our annual expenditure is, but we can fund up to that level.
Okay.
So, it's a good place to give us some flexibility as far as...
And this doesn't need voter approval?
No.
Okay.
Nope. Just Board approval.
Just trying to educate my...
Yep.
Greg, I think you answered this question. I think you actually answered it twice, because I got a workers' compensation reserve, and now I have to get out of the employees' retirement reserve, so I apologize if you very much agree with this. And that is easier than the employees' retirement reserve. So, our, our projected usage is 350, and we're not funding this anymore. It holds 4.8 years of cost, and we've agreed that we should hold about five years of cost, but 350 into 5.5 million isn't five years.
Right, but 350, Phil, is the amount we're contributing towards our costs. Our costs are actually well over a million and a half dollars for the, for the ERS. So we are partially funding our costs. See, one of the things we want to be careful of, and this is where, this is where, you know, the cost, reserve money is one-time money, and if we start fully funding the expense, in five years, when the reserve runs out, the expense will still be there. So that expense then would be a $1.8 million hit to our budget if we fully funded it five years consecutively. So the tricky thing with reserves is, how do you use the money and then not, you know, you have to kind of wean yourselves off of that, so you have to kind of do it in a very strategic way. Otherwise, you can create huge swings for your taxpayers.
So really, that...
Yes. Yes.
You did answer right.
Thank you. That, that's a good way to play, to phrase it.
Really, so, really, the, the Employee Retirement Reserve, or Retirement, is funded through our budget?
Correct.
And then this is leftover money that we have put back into it to build it, to help stabilize our financial situation later on, when we hit one of them bumps?
Right. So when the rate started to go up, I mean, if we wanted to say that we're going to budget for anything up to 8%, if the rate's, anything over 8% in the rate, we take out of the reserve, now that would be a very strategic way of protecting the taxpayers, but still using the money to, to keep our tax rate down, but doing it in a strategic fashion, so that you're not using it all at one time.
Let me just, I, I always love to try to clarify, because there's a lot of logic to what's been said. So if you think what Greg is saying, if we use, we've got an, an annual expense, let's say of 1.5 million annually, and we budget for most of that, and we use a little bit of this to, to round out the edges. If we use this, I think it was Phil was kind of thinking, if we use this to pay the expense, the full expense every year, at the end of the five years, there would be no money left in that reserve, but in year six, we still need to come up with $1.5 million. The only way we could get that money is to raise the tax rate and, and create more through the levy. That's why it's important that that reserve has some...
You wouldn't have to raise, you would still budget for 1.5. So if the cost came in at 1.8, well then you'd only have to raise the tax levy to make up $300,000.
No, we'd need the whole 1.5, because we have no, we've created a hole, because we have no way to pay for it. That, this is an important concept.
He's saying if you use the entire amount.
If instead of budgeting 1.2 million towards this and taking $300,000 out of the reserve, if we took the entire 1.5 out of the reserve, when the reserve is gone, now we have to come up with about 1.5 million in taxes.
So basically, take that 1.5 out of the budget.
That's what happens with a lot of reserves, and we need to be cautious that we don't, you may have heard Greg use this term a lot, to create a hole for us at, at one point in our budget. This kind of helps us keep the ebb and flow even, as opposed to one year having a, you know, and again, we've got a real problem, because we have a tax cap at this point. Years ago, you would be able to say, we're going to go for a 6% or 7% increase, because we're going to fund, you know, we're going to fund this expense all through the, through the taxes, as opposed through, as opposed to maintaining a portion through taxes and a portion through, through reserves. So, again, I want, does, does that make sense to people? Because it's, it's, it's a very critical understanding of, of leaving us paying all expense with reserves.
So the next reserve is the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve, or sometimes there's an acronym, EBLR. And basically, this reserve allows for the payment of any accrued employee benefit due an employee on termination of their service. This reserve was created by the district, June 23rd, 2005. Interest earned in the last school year, $218. No capital gains or losses. You can see the balance there from 2011 forward. Our projected usage this year is about $5,000. And basically, the funding level of this reserve is determined by the monetary value of our accumulated absences for our staff. So there's actually a formula that drives the, the, the appropriate funding of this. Now, a year or two ago, some districts had this reserve overfunded, and the legislature and the governor said, as a one-time deal, you could take that overfunding out and use it to offset the massive loss of state aid. Well, ours was never overfunded, so we were not in that position, thankfully, but, but that's how you determine a level, is they look at our compensated absences for existing staff, and then they determine what the liability is if everybody left it at a specific time, and then you can put in funding to cover that cost. This reserve is, the purpose to reimburse the state unemployment fund for payments made to claimants. The date established is actually prior to 1998. This reserve was in place when I came to Wayne, so I don't know the exact... This reserve was in place when I came to Wayne, so I don't know the exact date, but it's prior to 1998. Interest earned is $735. No capital gains or losses. You can see the balances there, and you can see an uptick there in 2012. And what was happening to the district was as the, as the country went into recession and the state's finances were struggling, those unemployment costs went up, and the federal government extended the unemployment benefit for an additional...
Forever.
Yeah, an additional amount of time.
99 weeks.
And so our costs went way up. We were paying, we went from about a $30,000 or $35,000 a year cost to about $150,000 or $160,000. So the last time when we funded it, we took that current exposure times five. What the comptroller wanted us to do was take an average of the last five years, and we felt that would have underfunded it. But now that the economy's in a better place, our costs have come down. So this is one that, at this time, is probably overfunded. It exceeds the five-year level. It was at the five-years base when our costs were higher, and now they've come down. So this would be one that we would be talking with the board about in the future about lowering that balance. So that's why the upcoming fiscal year funding, no initial funding is required.
Greg, what is the average person who files employment/unemployment? What would be the constraints for that? Are they let go to lack of work? Is it a teacher who is displaced and...
Not parent, yeah.
You know, there's not enough sections, or there's not enough enrollment, or whatever? And then that teacher's laid off because there is no position, then they file? I mean, where is most of our claimants coming from?
And actually, I'll defer that question, Carla, to Rob because he reviews all of our unemployment claims, so I think he could speak better.
Yeah, so for many of the reasons that you said, you know, if somebody, sometimes somebody will resign, and they'll try, and then we, you know, we kind of see what happens there. Or just in cases where people get laid off, you know, deductions in force, and those types of things, we'll see that, and then, you know, and then they'll be in a position to receive those benefits for as long as they are not working in the future.
It's just a few people a year, right? Few people?
Um, yeah, I mean, I can pull something together, and you can...
No, I don't, I don't want you to put that, I just, you know, like, two to seven people?
I would say it's more than that.
It's more than that.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
And up until this year, we were paying unemployment to bus drivers, correct? This summer? For the...
Subs. Only to the subs.
Correct.
Because that's what we agreed on. All right. And substitute teachers aren't liable for, or we're not responsible for unemployment to subs?
We provide, we provide a letter of reasonable assurance...
Right.
...to our board, including our substitute teachers, and now our substitute bus drivers. And basically, that says that within 90% assurance, you'll get the same amount of work as you did last year.
Is that part of the contract, or...
It's not part of the contract, it's part of the law.
Right, and then they can't file.
Yeah, the letter of insurance helps them from claiming unemployment because unemployment then understands that they do have a job, you know, a job or the same amount of hours they had previously, they're coming back to get. So before the letter of assurance, though, they would, they, many years back, they were eligible substitutes or long-term subs were eligible for unemployment during the summer before they initiated the letter of assurances. That's a while back, but that has helped kind of curb that.
Does that affect our substitutes at all, or, I mean, the reserve of substitutes? Because I know sometimes it's, you see, you see signs everywhere, help on it, bus drivers.
I mean, they understand, you know, are you talking specifically about our sub drivers?
Sub drivers, yeah, because that's all this really applies to, the sub drivers. Your full-time drivers don't have the option of getting unemployment in the summer.
Because they were given...
Right, right.
...letters of assurance, right. So really, out of that group, there was about a half a dozen people who were doing, even out of the subs. So there's been a few, but it's been very, very minimal in terms of the impact to the...
And it hasn't put an undue stress on our...
No.
I'm just curious.
And this is our first year that we've done for the bus drivers, correct? Didn't we...
It's the substitute bus drivers only, not the...
The sub drivers.
All right.
Because everybody else, everybody else was getting a letter of assurance.
Right. The next reserve is the liability reserve. This reserve is, the purpose is to pay for property loss or liability claims incurred. Once again, this reserve was established prior to 1998. It earned $1,621 in the last fiscal year. Capital gains or losses, none. You see our audited balances there from 2011 to the present, pretty steady. In the past, if the, if there was tax claim, tax cert claims, any lawsuits, this was the reserve the district used. It's a reserve the district always used, but basically, like I said, on the recommendation of the comptrollers, they felt it was better to separate out the tax part, so we've done that. But this money would be used, we've used it for lawsuits that the districts incurred and had to pay money out. We have none on file. We don't project any usage for this for the 1415 school year, and we believe that no additional funding in the upcoming year is required. Insurance Reserve. Purpose, to pay for liability casualty and other types of losses, except for losses that are incurred and which you can get other types of insurance, like life insurance, health, accident, mortgage insurance, all, there's other types up there. Date established, June 30, 2004. Interest earned in 1314 is $1,614. Capital gains or losses, none. You can see the balances there from 2011 to 2014. And the balances prior to the last audit were substantial. This was where, when we couldn't put any money, any more money into the capital reserve because it was maxed out at five, we were putting money into this reserve. Legally, you can put 5% of your budget a year in this reserve by law. So once the last audit came through and we restructured our reserves, we pulled the lion's share of this money out and funded the ERS and some of the other reserves that, where you saw the balances increase. Our projected usage for 1415 is zero. No additional funding is required, and this would be another reserve that, moving forward, that the superintendent and I will be talking to you about. We feel this one is overfunded. We don't use it, and we could use the funds more appropriately in other reserves.
Greg, give me an example of what a claim for that would be.
Carla, it would be if you had some kind of an insurance loss, and say you had a $10,000 or $20,000 deductible, so you pay that first 20, and then the insurance company kicks in, so you can use that to cover your deductible losses.
I didn't know if we had, if that money, as I know, some districts, like if you're an employee and a student hits you and breaks your glasses, the district reimburses you for that. I didn't know if that comes out of this, so, okay.
No.
All right, thanks.
And that concludes the reserve report. Do you have any questions?
Greg, can I get a little bit more?
Yes.
I'm going to give you the answer.
Okay.
You can say, I will accept the answer, and we'll discuss this stuff. I'm going to give you an answer.
Okay.
So we had comments earlier about optimal levels, and I think I've seen this for a couple of these upcoming fiscal year funding, except you put in here that we have a targeted, targeted amount established for five years. And then there's a couple where you said we have, are slightly overfunded, and then you also sit here and you listen to purpose for someone's future. So here's the question. Do we have a plan to spend our reserves? If you're going to have like a... Well, here's what I'm really asking, is it seems to me that if you, if I sit here and listen to this, it seems we have a plan. The plan is fund it, keep it funded for about five years, and spend it to move out of bumps and... So that's a good answer. And then a couple, you've actually said they're overfunded, and you got to... So the question is, is that, is that a plan to spend reserves? And I don't know if it's a plan to spend it as much as a plan to, a plan for our reserves. Is that written anywhere? Is it in a piece of paper that if I, District, I give you the District, and I want to know. And I hear all this hubbub going around about audits and state comptrollers reports, and I'm all inquisitive. And I want to know, what is your plan? What is the District's plan for reserves? We have something that we could say, oh, District, here it is. Do we have that? And if we don't, can we get it? And it can be a sentence, it can be two sentences, from a reserve that says, our plan is to have enough in this reserve for a five-year, to cover a five-year plan, and we don't even state fund it, or we plan on having it legal, or we plan on leaving it in neutral for the foreseeable future. Do we have that? And if we don't, can we?
I would say unofficially, we do have that. Is it completely written down, verbatim, word for word, in one place? I would say no.
I think unofficially, we just got it. So I guess my suggestion then is, which is why maybe it's a competition, or maybe officially. Because, again, I don't think that that's something we need to start making. I don't want to start barking up demands and make resolutions. It's just at least a suggestion that we should care about.
Yeah, and it's a great suggestion, and it's a suggestion supported by our audit report, and I think that's what we're moving to. And part of what you're hearing this evening, I think, is probably a more comprehensive reserve report than you've probably had in the past. And there's still a few more things that we want to continue to add to this report. But, Phil, I think you hit it right on the head. I think it's a good question. I think, when you think of reserves, you ask yourself, what do you use your savings accounts at home for? Sometimes you have your savings account to, you know, you're going to buy a car, and you got another little account for that emergency-type stuff, and that's, and we're kind of all over the place, as you could see here. So we are getting more comprehensive in terms of what and why we want to, and how we want to use those reserves. And I'll tell you, though, it is an evolution in educational financing because years ago, reserves were a great way to help stabilize a district. And as we know, during the recession, the tax cap, the use of reserves is so much more critical, and understanding what we need to do with the reserves is so much more critical. And I think all school districts, and it's been my experience because I've been in a couple, are fighting with the same questions. So we're not alone there, but I think we've got a good start in terms of, you know, talking about our reserves now and answering that question. Unofficially, I think you're right. We know, you just heard kind of what we have them for. Officially, we need to get it down in writing and be clear. And I think one of our, one of our residents has been talking, and also a member of our audit committee, is always, and he's asking good questions, and we are looking for someone to give us the answers. You know, how and when do you use reserves? And Jerry, I just tell you, I've been calling around to see if we can get, to see if we can get someone to come in and do that, and I'm getting some very interesting answers. There are, some accountants don't want to commit, some of our accountants say, like, I'm not sure I want to, that there's a good, right, straight answer. I got a call into Officer on, or the Office Comptroller, State Comptroller, I haven't got a call back because they have a number there. They're good questions, but I think the bottom line is, as you see, our reserves have been used to keep us stable. I think of, I think of the reserves as going on the budget with our GNE or whatever your electric provider is. You could pay as you go, some months you're way high, and some months you're low. Our reserves help us even that off for our budgeting practices and help minimize the spikes for years, the spikes in the tax rates. Again, tax caps now have basically done that for us as well, so now we need to revisit, you know, the purpose of the reserves and how we use them. There's no doubt about it. They've been used creatively in a lot of school districts over the years, as you know, to help fund large capital projects and support them as well. May not be the actual, actual way they're designed to use, but they've been used that way. But as you can see, I think we're getting more realistic. We're going to take a look at reserves that are overfunded for you guys. We're going to move forward with that conversation and hopefully get something in writing that we can be comfortable with moving forward this year.
Okay.
You know, I think one of the things that I would just like to share is when, back in 2010, when things first started to happen, you know, we found ourselves with money to fund a plan that was not approved. So the first question we said was, okay, how can we use this money to benefit our taxpayers? So what was shared with the board at the time, and unfortunately, there's not one of those board members left on this board, but what was shared with the board at the time was, we're going to make some expenditures on what we consider one-time items, because you've always heard us say, reserves, one-time money, one-time items. So that first year, we spent about a million and a half dollars. At the end of the year, we bought Bob Miller, a new $75,000 tractor that we would have put in the budget the following year to mow all of our fields. We bought him a small tractor for $30,000. We bought food service, a new van. We bought two new driver ed cars. We did all kinds of technology stuff that we, you know, everything we did was in the line of one-shot purchases, at least initially, because basically, our question was, how can we still, that project would have helped save this district money, but the voters didn't like the way it was structured, and we accept that. But the concept was, how can we still, you know, that money was for protecting the taxpayers, how can we still do that and protect our budget? So the initial use was that. Then when the, then when the state fell into a financial crisis, during every budget presentation, we said that that money that was set aside for that, we're going to use to supplement our budget and not cut program and staff. And we did exactly that through the four or five years of the state crisis. So, you know, that stuff was always shared during budget development in public sessions. You know, it wasn't written down, but it wasn't a secret to anybody. And now that the state is climbing out of that, you know, I think it's a perfect time for us to go to the next evolution of a plan and to, you know, have it written down so that it's very transparent for everybody to see. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, certainly did. Like I said, I certainly don't, I'm not being critical.
No, I know, I know. Absolutely.
Before we move into the reserve fund regulations, I believe we may have some students in the audience who are here as part of the participation. You may need to have a document signed. You're not just in the fact that you need to get home and do your homework, so if you have any students who want to have their documents signed, if you can get out of here, come on up, and we'll sign you and get you out of here.
Here's his old sign, I thought you had to grab yours. There it is, right there.
But you're welcome to stay.
Good for you.
Who's your teacher? Okay. I love him, he's great. He's a great guy.
I used to live across the street from a girl named Sherry Millen, but she's much older, so I know it's not you. Congratulations, you're a senior. Where are you going? Think hard, watch your pennies. What'd you ask her, Joe?
Question.
Oh, okay.
Oh, he's in there, isn't he? Oh, yeah. I think it's right here.
Well, same here, you same there.
They're all going to become business officials because they sat through this reserve.
They're going to be able to tell their parents, calm down.
So are we set to go? President? Okay. We're, we just had the reserve fund report, and what we're going to do is jump down and do the reserve fund regulations. What we proposed for the board this evening is, it's a regulation, and it's a new regulation because we haven't had a regulation. We had a policy, and part of our audit suggested that we create a regulation to support the policy, and that's what this regulation is, was, is introduced for. We had a, we had a great suggestion, again, by a community member. So I would ask you to look at the regulation. It's a bi, we're looking for a bi-annual report, and we're defining bi-annually as twice a year. So we may want to edit this right now to... So we may want to, uh, edit this right now to, um, uh, to, to read twice a year when we move and, uh, and ask you to adopt it. But the, uh, again, the, the regulation, uh, is designed to support the, the policy. And what you want to keep, uh, I, I think what's important of the regulations are, are taking a look, um, at the, the, the common principles that we're trying to achieve moving forward, meaning the, the report and the types of reporting that's going to happen, and then reporting requirements, which I think is something a little bit new. And I think it's something that people have been asking for, and clearly, uh, the office of the state comptroller suggested that we do that. So that's something that we've, uh, been working on, um, and we wanted to get it to you guys for, uh, and, and, and technically, this is a regulation that doesn't have to be adopted by the board, because typically, regulations are developed by the, um, uh, by the district. Policy is adopted by the board. But I feel all of our regulations, and we'll be bringing regulations to you whenever we do policy review, should at least have the, uh, the earmarking of the board as well. So, um, it's, it's not a requirement, but it's, it's a kind of a courtesy for you to approve or accept our, our regulations. So, uh, that's what we're kind of asking you to do this evening, and, and we're, uh, available for any questions that you may have on, on the reg.
It's a good way to make sure we have a good regulation, a good policy.
Yeah, again, as we move forward with any, um, any, um, policy change, although there's a policy change this evening, that's, it's kind of a, a little bit different situation, we want to make sure that we have the corresponding reg, regulation for you guys as well. So as we move forward, that's what we're going to try to do. In this particular case, we've had a policy, um, that was updated, um, a while ago on the reserves, but we never had a regulation to go with it. So here's a regulation, and we would ask you to, uh, you know, to, uh, accept or approve this regulation. It's not, again, it's not like a formal adoption, but approve this regulation moving forward. Uh, this is a reg that we will tie to our policy as, as we move forward.
Do we have any other questions? Or, or? Can we get approval of the regulation? And? Would that, would that change?
Yes, we're going to amend the change to be, uh, every, or twice a year. I, I was thinking of every two years, but I have a feeling that, that wasn't going to, that wasn't going to fly. And, until Jerry suggested, I didn't even think of it. But I, but no, it's, it's twice a year is what we're, is what we're looking at. Now, um, yeah, certification of lead evaluators, evaluating, I think you have a, a resolution for that. And let me just, prior to your reading the resolution, that's our, uh, the superintendent has the ability to certify our lead evaluators, which are our administrative team that observe teachers. They go through a series of different training. If you have any, uh, when you call the question, if you have, if you, uh, call the motion, if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer the questions, then Joe will be here also to help us out.
One I would like to ask, uh, for somebody to make a motion to certify this, to bring some more legislators and lead evaluators up here. Tim and, uh, Matt, any of this guy? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
Why? Why am I freezing? Because it's cold in here.
Underboard business, uh, we had some questions about the website, and, uh, at this point, I'd like to open it up for, uh, discussion and, uh, and, and.
Uh, yeah, so, I forgot we're discussing this. When, when, when someone, when, when someone writes in and, and gives us questions for the board, uh, we had this policy, or we had this idea that we were going to take these questions and put them up on the website, and depending that's been brought to our attention, then either, some had been added to the website with answers, some hadn't been, some had, it appeared to me that the website hadn't been updated in a long time. Uh, frankly, just from my own memory, it seemed like we had got questions that we never posted up there. And so, and then all of a sudden, one appeared, and there were none before it, none after it. So my question was, uh, how do they go up? Who puts them up? When do they show up? And the other thing was, I actually had to take a shot in the dark at how long it had been, because it's a whole day to time. So if I submit a question, um, September 45th to the board, or even if I email the board, and it's September 45th, and then the question, someone actually does post it to the website and does put an answer up, if there's not a, a date of time that says we submitted on September 45th, and then I, as a resident or as a board member even go in and look at it, I have no idea how old that question is. I don't know if someone asked that question a year, but it was two days ago. So I think that was why I asked, we could add this to the agenda, was how, how is that done? And we, without being critical, I don't know that, I don't know that questions have been submitted and actually be updated. So I don't want to make it sound like, hey, they've got a question, they've never been put on the website, let's reveal. That's not my question. My question is, how does it occur? And are we making sure that this happens?
How do we have the process?
Yeah, and just understand the process.
I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit, and then Phil, I mentioned that to me. So I tried to do a little research, and my understanding is, in, in the past, in the past, questions would come to the superintendent's office, through, through board meeting, or through questions from community members, through board members, and typically, they then go, Kathy, Kathy will, um, post them on the web with the course on the answer based on whether they have to be sent to the superintendent or to the board. I think there's good questions. I sure invented that process in my first month there, because Ron gave me a column saying, I think there's a question that needs to be on the Q and A section of the webpage, um, and I didn't realize the process, so I actually had a baby, if she could put that question out.
That's why that was a question.
So there's a question that we updated, um, again, I think, posted off the way to the, I wasn't sure if it was possible, I actually thought it was something good and right, um, and Kathy let me know that it wasn't the process. So, um, so now we, uh, so, so understanding that's the way the process works. Now, I think that there was a time when questions were coming in, probably a little bit faster than, than, than they are now. But I would ask the board to consider one o, one other thing as we move forward. We now have a, a board button, um, frequently, which, which kind of gives another opportunity for community members to ask questions, and we've been getting questions from that link as we're, as we're testing it out with the members. We've gotten about four or five of those, and one of the things that, that I suggested happened there is, and Amy monitors those questions, because they come directly in on, on the website, and she sends them to the board, and we've probably been getting some of those, and she copied me, and it's a benefit that Amy now copied Kathy. And I think part of your discussion should be that, as we answer those questions, they probably could be transferred to the Q and A, which a lot of people understand, they can go there, they can get recent questions and answers. So another thing for you, for you guys to think about, and I think, uh, Phil, the other thing that you mentioned is, in, in this conversation, we'll take your direction, but we can time and stamp on the date, which I think is a good suggestion. But I think you also need to discuss how long you, you think they should stay on, is it, you know, is six weeks, enough, a year, a three week, and definitely, we're kind of waiting for, for your discussion, so that we can set that, uh, that process, you know, firm that process off.
And then the other thing to consider is, I, I, it does seem to me, and maybe it's because I'm not the president anymore, but it seems like there's less questions to it than there was in the last year. But we certainly don't want to, also, what you don't want to do is have this procedure in place, and then all of a sudden, an incident happens, and we're getting 50 questions from the community, and then we're, we're overburdening our staff with trying to help the questions. So that's another consideration. I don't think we're at that point now, but I certainly don't want to, um, just assume or take for granted that, I know it takes people's time to get it done. I'll play your, I don't think we need more than six months. I mean, I would consider a year, but no more than a year, but six months.
Six months.
Does it have to be six? I think. No. Well, I think we discussed it at the communication, I, I remember discussing it someplace, that we can archive on the website. So they'll always be there, but they won't be in your face when you click. So what would be wrong with a month? Put them up, have them up for a month, after the month, they're archived.
I would only suggest that perhaps you have incidents that last more than a month. So, it's about giving you, you, I think, you couldn't, you could get a question on the first, and somebody might not get to the website and look until three, one days later, and then we would be dealing with the same question. So I would suggest maybe a little bit more than 30 days, but maybe 90 days would be a reasonable.
Yeah, three months.
Just because you, you do have some incidents that kind of drag out.
Right. And if we archive, is there, I don't know the answer to this question, but can we archive them by topic? If my question pertains to this topic, I can click a folder in the archives that is labeled that, so I can go through questions and.
Or a keyword.
See. I don't know. I don't do technology, so I don't know. But that's a thing.
I, I would go into history, it says you have to keep it simple, or, uh, do it by topic, or that's a many, like, I'm good.
Right. We, we can explore, um, that history, but for that, and Amy, uh, that part of this year was kind of a, and asked her to, she's taken notes.
On the, on the Q and A process, okay, we had some questions asked tonight at the board meeting. Um, do we post the answers of that question and that answer? I mean, the question was answered in public, I, or asked in public, I think it should be answered in public, and I think that that would be a good place to put answers. I mean, as.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm not sure, but I know as, you know, uh, in the public before.
We discussed this, it might not have ended last year, so I don't.
Okay, I wasn't involved with that, then.
I think, it was so, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the idea was, we would do exactly that. If the questions were submitted in the writing.
Right.
It's part of what Ron says, so.
Okay.
If you, if you come up and say, let's do both, too, and then you never submit that question to the board.
We can't answer.
We're not going to get an answer. But the idea is, if you take the time to write the answers down, or questions, I'm sorry, and you come up and you ask the board questions, and then you turn them over to the board, we move them.
Okay. And, um, with our answers. Obviously.
But that was a good question.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure, I mean.
I think just to have the, I mean, they should be submitted in writing.
Yeah.
And another on that, for the questions that were asked, because they happened a lot last year, um, if we can't answer the question.
We answer the question by saying we can't answer the question.
Omitting it, so then we get, we accuse of, you don't answer my question.
Yeah, you've asked, everybody asked us, and nobody answered.
So at least we can put it there and say, we can't answer the question.
A hundred percent.
President, trying to reach a decision tonight, we want to, uh, to let Amy and John do some research, see what's possible, and perhaps put this on the agenda, and decide if we can.
I.
Just type in the question.
Time frame, I think. I mean, I think it's the intent of the board to be responsive to public, to be responsive to that. I think it's just a place, a time frame, and, and just.
Can you just take, does anybody stop? 90, 90, will you?
I'm, I was just.
I'm doing it.
You do.
90 sounds like a normal, it's, it's going 90, and, and, John, the only thing I would ask you, in, 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 is, is, I would say, to our, for the benefit of our staff that's dealing with this, let's apply the history.
Whatever's easiest.
So what I see, what I'm seeing is, is a 90 day, and then we'll, we'll come up with a way of archiving them, and we will time.
Time stamp them.
So there, and we'll make sure that there are any questions that we, um, can, and sort of, you know, post the question, and answer that there, or, or, whatever, uh, does that, if, if that's what the president wants to add. So we'll get it going, and then, like, what needs to be submitted, or, or?
Thanks, Ray.
Next on the, uh, the agenda for Friday, is a discussion with the, some, some.
You are the man of the hour.
Yes, indeed.
Two.
So, the second presentation tonight is on the alternative veterans exemption. This is a little background information. If the board recalls, this was something that was put into state law. It previously did not apply to school districts. The state changed the law, I believe, around the beginning of 2014, and then allowed school districts, if they so chose, to offer this exemption, uh, for veterans. There was no mandate to take action, it was an individual decision. And, uh, schools would have to act before March 1st of 2015 for this, uh, exemption to be applied to next year's school tax bills. So that's a timeframe that the board is looking at. And it applies to, it's a partial exemption from real property tax for qualifying wartime veterans, primary, private or primary residents. But a veteran, a spouse of a veteran, or the unremarried spouse of a deceased veteran may apply. And you would, you would apply at the Office of Real Property Taxes.
Now, when I say deceased, I mean, it, from a heart attack or from war? I mean, I, there's no clarification there.
Yeah, it, that, that's all it, it didn't clarify if they died in combat or died.
If we're able to act on this, we'd have to get some clarifications, I think, on.
Well, I want to know what the difference is between a spouse of a veteran, or the unremarried spouse of a veteran. I mean, only the veteran.
Or widower, in the state.
Right, but the spouse, why could the spouse?
Of a veteran or the unremarried.
Right, if the spouse, the veteran would apply.
Saying the same thing twice, that's all.
But, and then, you know, the spouse couldn't apply, the veteran would apply. The only way the spouse could apply, if the, what, veteran was dead.
Yeah, it's just wording.
I think it's clarifying that the spouse is not remarried.
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right.
There's not another income coming in that's.
Sorry.
And wartime is defined as the following: World War II, with the, those applicable dates, uh, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Persian Gulf Conflict. Or a veteran may apply if he or she received an armed forces, Navy, Marine Corps, or a global war on terrorism, expedendurey medal. There's three levels of exemption: wartime veteran, combat total, and disability. The basic maximum levels that have been adopted by New York State and Wayne County are 12,000 for wartime veteran, 20,000 for combat total, 40,000 for disability. There are also two, uh, decrease levels to those numbers, and there are multiple increase level options of those numbers.
What is this number of?
Number of mean, yeah.
Yeah, this is number of, is it, is it go off of your session?
Yes, you'll see that in a second. And for our two, uh, two towns, Walworth has adopted the, um, the county and, and the state numbers, and as you can see, Ontario has adopted a more, an increased value for those levels. So that's what our two local towns are doing for town taxes. So the estimated impact, so by offering this exemption, it doesn't change the amount of school tax levy that we're going to need to raise to support our budget. So that amount of taxes, 19,672,192 that we collect currently, that's our levy amount, that amount would not change. 774 eligible veterans that live in our community, if this exemption, uh, were approved, would see school tax savings.
So I, I think I asked this question before, if this was the pass, if it was the decision, of those 774 veterans, is it an automatic, and all of a sudden, they're going to get a decreased bill, they'll know it, or do you have to actually go apply for it?
I believe they have to go apply for it.
So there's 774 eligible, but frankly, you might only get 300 because they didn't apply for it.
Yes, I have, I have no way of knowing who would apply, and I, I can try and clarify if they've already applied for other municipalities, if that, if that applies here, but typically, I would think you, they would require you to reapply. And, but that's, that's our maximum exposure, I guess, is, is another way of saying that.
Right, where did, where did the seven hundred and seventy-four number come from?
That came from the Wayne County Office of Real Property Taxes. I actually have a printout, and they gave me that total, and it has names and addresses of people who make up the seven hundred and seventy-four.
Who are already, are getting the exemption based upon their veteran status.
Correct.
So there could be another five hundred people in our community who are eligible, but they're not chosen to do so.
I believe that is correct.
Well, Phil, have you applied for this?
Well, we haven't passed it.
No, 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 do you, on the county or?
On the county or county.
You're aware of that, okay. So most people are, I don't mean to put you on the spot, by the way, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have done that. But, they notified you, or how, how does, how does it work for?
No, it's pretty small, community work, it's all pretty good, I mean, like, basically, I feel like all veterans know that if you could get property tax.
Okay.
Really, and I'm pretty sure that if we were to, and again, I, I can't speak for anybody, I speak for myself and my own community of veterans. I'm pretty sure that if we made a, whatever that number was, sixty thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars to relieve off your, your school taxes, I'm pretty sure board would spend fifty.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, he says seven hundred and seventy-four, and then you said, maybe not all would. I got a feeling most would.
We gotta go worst case scenario.
Huh?
Either those that already did.
Right.
So, so as we stated, seven hundred and seventy-four eligible veterans currently live in our community, and they would see a savings, and the school tax rate on all remaining property would increase by approximately one point three percent. So, once again, the estimated impact, when you put it in dollars for property exemption for those seven hundred and seventy-four is approximately twelve million, one eighty-five, one ninety-eight. So that amount of property would come off of our assessment roll, but yet we would still have to raise the same levy amount, which in turn is going to make for a rate increase. So for two thousand and fourteen, the year that we're in right now, and the tax bills that are being paid currently, this would have raised the true value tax rate by twenty-five cents per thousand of assessed value, or one point three percent. Now, the tax rate would raise for everybody, but the veterans are getting the exemption, and the non-veterans are not, so, and you'll see that illustrated with this slide right here. So, what we've done here is put together a chart, and you can see the, the top half reflects what's going on right now, before any, because you have not applied, you have not approved the veterans exemption. And so that shows what's going on right now for people that would be in those three categories of wartime, combat, or disability. So a hundred thousand dollar home, minus the basic star of thirty thousand, gets you to a school taxable value of seventy, and then the true value tax rate is twenty-sixty-six per thousand of assessed value, school tax bill, one thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. So then you go down to the after, and sticking in the wartime column, using the same example, same home, assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, and if this were to be approved, now they get a twelve thousand dollar exemption, which reduces the assessed value to eighty-eight thousand. Now you apply the basic star of thirty, which leaves a taxable value of fifty-eight thousand, and the increased rate, with the quarter increase there of twenty-ninety-three per thousand, that school tax bill now is one thousand two fourteen for a wartime veteran, or a two hundred and thirty-two dollar estimated savings, or in percentage, sixteen percent savings. So then the second column is the exact same scenario, but using the level of twenty thousand down on the exemption, on the after, instead of twelve, that was the second category, the combat total. So you can see for a person in that category, once again, their, their current tax bill, one thousand four forty-six, if this were to be approved, one thousand forty-seven, three hundred and ninety-nine dollar savings, or twenty-seven point six percent. And the highest category, disability, once again, before, one thousand four forty-six, you apply the forty thousand dollar exemption, lowers their property value from a hundred down to sixty, you take off the star, so now their school taxable is thirty thousand. You apply the adjusted rate, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars is their, it would be their tax bill if this were approved. That would be an eight hundred and eighteen dollars approximate savings for that individual, or a fifty-six and a half percent. And then the last column shows you for people who are not veterans, what, what it would mean. Currently, they're paying on a hundred thousand dollar home, one thousand four forty-six, and you can see the after for them, the assessed value stays the same, there is no exemption, so, still at a hundred thousand, you take off the star, they have a taxable, school taxable value at seventy, you apply the higher rate, their bill is now one thousand four sixty-five, for an estimated nineteen dollar increase, or one point three percent.
Now, can we play with the basic state and county exemption caps? Or do we have to follow their, you know, twelve thousand, twenty thousand, forty thousand?
Yeah, I, those numbers, Dennis, I put in there because that's what the state has adopted, and Wayne County.
We can change that, and.
Yes, there's a chart that, that I have from the Wayne County Office of Real Property, and it shows, like I said, there's two categories that are less than the basic, and there's, I think, probably a dozen that go higher than that. Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions on, and Phil can probably do this. To, to have disability as a veteran, is, is that a total disability?
No, it would be, it's got to be, as long as you qualify as a disabled, and that is probably anybody, I guess, without having, how the state is applying it, but I'm pretty sure that it's a percentage to get that qualification as a disabled, that's our standard, if we need to go there, so. That would be for, the percentage, I don't know, but I'm sure that that is referring to veterans who have met the standards set by the government to get.
Disability.
Okay, and then.
I think the difference, again, I'm guessing, but I'm pretty sure, right. The difference between wartime and combat, is that probably another question?
Yeah.
One in combat.
Combat is, and again, I can speak for the Marine Corps, is if you are in the Marine Corps during wartime, you, you would probably get the benefits of, if you're in the Marine Corps, and you deploy to, and I'll just keep it within modern age, you deploy to Baghdad. When you're, you never see combat, but you're in the theater of war, you would get one of the global war on terrorism expeditionary. So you're, you, you have served in war, you've served in wartime, so you get the benefits of being a veteran. But that's a wartime veteran, combat veterans is different. That's if you actually, so again, in the Marine Corps, you get a combat extra, that has to be earned. So, just because you're in theater, and just because you're in Baghdad, doesn't mean that you're in combat. So unless you see combat for extended amount of time, and there's regulations that go around.
First, there was one, then there was two, I'm like, the guy's getting swerved.
I thought he was just being Italian and talking with his hands.
Must be some great cologne.
So it's not basically saying that you're in combat today, it's saying that you were in combat.
If you have seen combat, if you've served in combat, therefore you get some, so, so, in the Army, I think that's the difference between combat and disabled. I think that's, did I clarify that along all the.
Yeah, you know, because my, my, my son-in-law was in Afghanistan, so, but, you know, I don't know if being out on patrol, or whatever the heck he did, you know, you know, I, I know he saw a lot of not-so-nice things, but, you know, I just kind of wanted some definition. Now, you were there, you're there after the, after that date, right? You went to Persian Gulf, right? So, you would technically qualify for this as well, then, right?
I would qualify for a combat, because not only did I go, but I received that combat after.
And then it would be any one exemption, like, if you were dis, disabled, had a disability from it, you couldn't get the disability and the combat. Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, because I would look at both. I was in combat, and I got a disability.
I have a question, because this affects the voting public's answer rate, and since they vote on a budget with affect the taxes, do we have to put this before the voters, or is this strictly for?
Strictly, yes.
Because we are making a decision for the public.
Could I change your one word?
Uh huh.
Instead of, do we, could we put it to the public?
Because really, if we make the decision, we're deciding for.
Everybody.
You have to pay the, they don't have a say.
Well, there's two, can I, can I, John, how late do we have to, I'd like to talk to you, but we also say that we've been elected by the whole, particularly the citizens on here.
But, I think that this is not what we are elected for. We are elected for the educating of our children, not for the exemption of a specific group. I mean, and with the election, could we hold a special election for something like this? Because there's a timetable here of March, and that comes before our annual budget.
Right, the March timetable, Dennis, is only for next year. If you guys decided that you wanted to have the voters decide on the, on the budget vote date, then you, you clearly could do that, but then it wouldn't be effective for the fifteen, it would be effective. Say they voted to approve it, it would go into effect in two thousand and sixteen.
Right, because you got to make your budget.
Right, correct.
Proposals, everything else, okay.
And no school districts in Wayne County at this point have acted on this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and why is it that the, I mean, does it make any difference if the star comes first, or the exemption comes first, it doesn't really, does it?
No.
Because it's not a percentage.
I don't believe so, but it, it does specify how it, how it comes off.
It's a specified amount, it's not a percentage.
Right, but if it was, could it be a percentage, can we, I mean, is this an all or nothing, I mean?
No, there's, there's a table, like I said, there's, the, the numbers I showed you tonight are what they call the basic maximum that New York State has adopted, as well as Wayne County.
Right.
And you can see that, that earlier in the presentation, Ontario adopted at a higher level.
Right.
And Walworth decided to go with the state and county level. There are, based on the chart that I've seen, two lower levels than the basic, and like I said, and, and I, don't quote me, but there's probably about anywhere from ten to twelve higher levels. And there's, you know, there's still the three levels, and there's a, there's a table that shows those numbers.
Let me see what.
So if I'm reading this right, for our wartime vets, they're going to get two hundred and thirty dollars off their annual bill, our combat are going to get four hundred off, and the disabled are going to get about eight forty off. That's for seven hundred and seventy-four veterans in two towns, are going to get a pretty decent amount off of their school tax, for a cost for everyone else of nineteen dollars a year.
That's correct.
Less than two dollars a month.
For a hundred thousand dollars.
For a hundred thousand dollar home. Right, so if your home is assessed at two hundred, then those numbers would, correct.
But that's the savings, the veteran's savings.
Correct.
My time of disabled, I'm going to get eight hundred and twenty off, and I have a two hundred thousand dollar house, I'm getting sixteen, twenty off.
No, no, because it's a set dollar amount. You get the twelve thousand dollars, if your house is a three hundred thousand dollar home, and you fall into the wartime, you still only get the twelve thousand dollars off, if I'm reading this correctly. It's not twelve thousand dollars per thou, per hundred thousand.
Right, but if, but if your house is assessed, if you're a wartime vet, and your house is assessed at two hundred, then that number's going to change, the savings will be different. I don't know if it actually doubles or not, I'd have to run, I don't.
No, I mean, the way I'm reading this, is it's a set dollar amount that comes off, it's just like this.
Right, but the, but the, but the starting number, Dennis, is going to be higher.
Right, so two hundred.
But the way I'm looking at this is.
Minus forty thousand is one sixty, and minus your star, you're still not going to have, it's not going to be doubled.
The thing is, is your assessed value, say your assessed value is two hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Twice of what are assessed valued here. When you go down there and look at the basic state and county exemption, it's twelve thousand, twenty thousand, forty thousand. It doesn't matter what your assessed value is. That's the way I'm reading this, it doesn't matter what my assessed value is. They're giving me a set dollar amount, it's coming off my property taxes, period. You know, it's, so, if I'm two hundred thousand, it doesn't mean I'm going to get twenty-four thousand dollars off of it. It's still only twelve thousand, no matter what your house is assessed at.
Right. Might it alter your.
I mean, it's going to alter your, well, it's not going to alter your savings, it's, it's still going to be the same dollar amount at the end. You know, they're just using round numbers to make it simple.
I have a question, is this a year-to-year thing that we pass, or once it's done, it's done? So we can't.
Keep track of the person moving in and out.
Worst-case scenario in five years, and we're in a horrible spot, we can't take this back, to relieve some of the burden off the rest of the taxpayers. If we ever got this, would we have to, play card cash rate?
I, I'm not sure the answer to that, Jeremy.
Like, can, can it be rescinded at any point?
I would believe if you can offer it by board action, that you could probably rescind it, but I, I would have to double-check to verify that.
I'd be concerned that, like I said, worst-case scenario, hopefully never happens, but down the road, we have to bump up our number that we're charging our taxpayers, or we're taking from them, that, that's going to hit them much harder than if this is in place than if it's not.
You know, Wayne Central's always been a leader in a lot of things, and part of me wants to take the lead on this, but I'd like to see, I don't think our district can afford even what Walworth is, is doing, but I'd like to see what the lesser amounts would, and entertain this, and see what my fellow colleagues on the board feel about that, you know? We, we're, we're a good district, we have some beautiful homes here, and we have some veterans here, and I'd like to just see, you know, what the lesser, if it's thirty-six, if it's eighteen dollars on a hundred thousand dollar home, at the twelve, twenty, and forty thousand exemption, what would it be on the, on the lesser? The, you know, to do, to, to throw, I don't want to use this word, because my father hate, I, but, you know, throw the veterans a bone, but, you know, not the whole steak, I guess, kind of thing, is what I'm saying. I don't know, does that make sense to anybody? Yes, you're not nodding.
Well, because I think, I think it's a board question, that's why I'm not nodding, because I'm not a board member.
But, but you could get us, what I'm asking you, Greg, is you could get us the figures of whatever the lesser is.
I can do that, Carly, yes.
It's very simple to figure it out.
I'll answer that part of the question, yes.
Twelve, twenty, and forty, and cut that in half, that nineteen dollars.
I, I understand.
We could set it whatever we want.
That's what I'm asking him, is there a formula?
Okay, so, if I, if I might, the lesser amounts, the decreased option, the lowest one is, oh, this is hard to read. Six thousand for wartime, so it would be half of what is up there.
This is the least amount, this is the least we could go with, right?
I think that's twelve. Part of it is, is whited out, so I'm sorry, I can't. The disability, the lowest level is twenty.
Which is what we have.
The war, no, the disability is at forty, so it would be half of that. It'd be half of the six, so I got to believe the combat one is ten. And then, the next decreased level, so the next higher one, is nine thousand for wartime, so twelve would go to nine. And twenty would go to fifteen, and forty would go to thirty.
So if we went to six, ten, and twenty.
Those are the two decreased options, and then there's actually, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight increased options.
If we went to the six, ten, and twenty, it basically brings the cost to the public at nine dollars fifty cents per thousand, instead of the nineteen dollars, it cuts it all off.
Yes.
Well, it also depends, too, on what category people would be in. If you could have, of the seven seventy-four, if you have four hundred of them at the disabled rate, it's going to be askew, as if most of them are, and it would be a lot lesser amount if they were at the wartime. So you just don't know. So, you just don't know what percentage of veterans we have in what category.
Right. The amounts that Ontario has adopted, those are the highest levels.
And you know what it's costing them?
I have no idea.
One other question for Stephen. If we were to do this, if people like the lowest amount, see where everybody falls, so we have some defined numbers.
And then maybe some else that we could do is actually get from Ontario and Walworth, how many are on full disability, how many are on wartime and so forth down the line? So, we actually know, okay, look, if we offer this, we only have ten people on full disability. That whole number would change a lot more if we took that into account. And you're going to have the numbers, I mean, they have them already.
Actually, the county, Dennis, would have those numbers, Wayne County Real Property.
Would those numbers be available to us, Greg?
I believe they would be. I would have to call the Real Property Office of Wayne County. But since they gave us the total of twelve million and seven seventy-four, I'm sure, Ron, that they have those numbers.
And along with that question is, would that point was we could start off and reevaluate? And then to Jeremy's question, we could also find out if it's rescinded. In case we do something like lose county money or enable some.
The other question I wanted to ask you, Greg, is, so far, to the best of my knowledge, no district in the four counties school area has adopted this exemption. If we were to adopt this exemption, and if our tax rate were to change, and if we got into a situation in which the cap, for whatever reason, the state suddenly decreased our state aid, what would be the impact with the tax cap? Would it apply to the new rate? Would we, would it go back to the old rate, our tax rate?
Well, the tax cap applies to the levy.
Levy, okay.
It does not apply to the rate.
Okay, so the levy doesn't change?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
One other point you brought up, whether we vote on this or whether we let the public vote on it, just some things to think about. We're getting a lot of information here. And before they would, if we'd allow the public to vote on it, they need to have the same information. And you have to make sure everybody got it, because you want them to make a good decision with the right information. So, something else we need to, yeah.
Yep, so, if we move forward, it was all good discussion, but, so if the board decides to offer the exemption, they need to hold a public hearing. So, if you wanted to do it for the two thousand and fifteen school taxes, you have up until March first to hold that hearing. If you decide not to do anything, then there's no action required. And I guess another question that I would add is, do you, if you're going to have people vote on it, do you hold the public hearing before the vote? And I think that'd be another clarification we'd want to get. These are the municipalities around us that are offering the veterans exemption. And as Carla already stated, there is no Wayne Franklin Exposés district that's offering it currently. I asked at my last business officials meeting a week ago, and people are still basically trying to gather information and try to figure out the impact of this.
I'd like to, maybe the next time, you know, I think we do need to try to keep working through this to see, and let the public know, and especially the veteran that brought this forward to us, that we are looking at it in depth. But I think the big thing is, and if you rescinded, it's any time. And the other question is, the percentage of veterans in each category that would affect.
Yeah, I would definitely like those answers, and I would suggest we have this community to look at it. And that's equal to all of it.
I think, you know, like I said, we meet our community in a lot of areas. And maybe we need to be able to be there in this and really say yes or no. And then I think it would be a bit on the rest of our other districts around us.
Right, and just the last couple of slides, and these were really, you saw them before, you know, just recommendations from NISBA, the School Boards Association, just saying, you know, take the appropriate time to adequately inform all of your community on how this would affect the property taxes.
And I think, you know, it's not a process we have to rush into. We don't get to it by March, and we don't get to it. But I, it's just something to consider. And I think it would just be goodwill to the veterans in our area to know that we're exploring. Not that we actually act on it, we don't have to. But to just know that we care enough to look into it and see how it affects them, and how it affects everybody else.
So, we'll get you the numbers of the two lower levels for the next board meeting, and we'll get answers to all the questions that were posed tonight.
Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome.
Does the, is that enough time for you to get the information, Greg?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sure we, you feel comfortable with that, right?
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay.
All righty?
Greg, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
An awful lot of work went into that presentation, and we understand it with the audit and everything else that you had a lot on your plate at this time. But we appreciate all your efforts in going forward and putting that information together for us, so that we can at least make some informed decisions someplace in the future. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have a code of conduct approval. We need to have a motion to approve the code of conduct for our schools. Carla, Jeremy, for a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, can I get approval? Any opposed? Thank you. We also need to have a motion to approve Special Education Policy seventy-six eighty. This is an amendment to an existing policy. Can I get a motion? Phil, a second. Dennis, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Lastly, we have a gift to the district. We've, a family, the Schwartz family has generously made a gift of a hundred dollars to purchase books for the Ontario Primary Library. Kathy, can we ask that you would send them a thank you note? Moving on to the consent agenda, we have superintendent recommending approval of a number of items. Can I get a motion to approve? Jeremy, a second. Phil, I'm sorry, Pam, I saw him first. Any discussion? If not, can we have approval? Any opposed? Thank you. Committee reports. Jeremy, communications?
We have set our first roundtable for November thirteenth, seven o'clock till eight o'clock in the middle school library. Our topic is going to be current state and future possibilities of the district's facilities. It's the goal of the committee to share out progress and updates that have occurred during our current preservation project. We also want to share the benefits that changes are having for the district and answer questions that the community might have about the project as it's closing up. And we also discussed, maybe if time permits, to have a discussion on the future needs of the district, what some community members might like to see, and that's where we're going. Our next meeting is scheduled, our next committee meeting is scheduled for the ninth of October, five o'clock, District Audit Committee.
Thank you, Jeremy. Audit Committee, Matt?
Yep, the vet, September eighteenth, and for the business, we're basically setting our schedule for the rest of the year. We'll begin at high three P M. Next meeting is thirty, I call it, period. And then the November thirteenth, the eighteenth, and January fifteenth. Those three will be included in the construction for the public office. And college hall, two halls, and also the public office back in April, March twelfth, and April sixteenth. So, we did that, and then we have topics for future meetings. And one of the things I suggested, presentation on legal and corporate risk reserve funds. And we established a new capital reserve, discussion of that this year. We're also discussing cost reserve, used to purchase, upcoming cameras. And we see the federal claims auditor report. We don't want to keep this a bit more embarrassing than we've seen before. See where we stand with the previous issues, with a couple of things that we're seeing. And that's pretty much, I'll check for you.
Policy Committee, Phil?
We actually haven't had a meeting since the last, since we resolved the last meeting, but the fact that the policy service is saving, and saving, getting the code kind of, of course. The next meeting is scheduled for nine October, I believe, that's the date of the next one. We had set some prior rates of other topics in the process, top of the comp for the name of the facility. So, a couple of things I need to be addressed, we don't have a lot of things to talk about.
Okay. I've got it on my list, Dennis. Under Board President comments, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to extend condolences to the family of Wilson John Cox. He was a former school board member at Wayne Central. He passed away in July in Florida. And on behalf of the Board, I would like to send our regrets to his family. Also, Pam mentioned attending the New York State School Boards Association Leadership Seminar. This was my first opportunity to interact with other school board members in a, in a learning situation, but also in an atmosphere in which a great deal of information gets exchanged, person to person. And while we, as a district, may have felt that we've gone through some stressful times and had some very unique situations, I assure you that talking to fellow school board presidents, many, many other districts are experiencing the same questions. And also, as part of NISBA's leadership initiative, they now have a new feature on their webpage where board presidents can go onto that webpage and discuss issues in their district. The two issues that seem to be the prevalent themes at the present time are the veterans exemption. Districts all across the state are wrestling and are trying to come to grips with what to do with this veterans exemption, because the state basically provided the legislation by which schools can transfer taxes from veterans to the remainder of their population, and, but did not provide any funding to go along with that. That's the one issue that seems to percolate the other. And the other is Common Core and reaching new standards. And Dennis mentioned the fact that China's top twenty-five percent, the top twenty-five percent of the students in China and in India are greater than the total number of students in the United States. And those are the people that our kids are going to be competing with for top jobs. This is part of the reason, I think, for the Common Core. But that seems to be a pretty common thread that boards are wrestling with that issue. And then the last thing I would like to bring up is that, in the past, Wayne has had a student representative to the board, and I understand for a variety of reasons that it was thrown away with. But there has been some talk about the fact that maybe it's time to reinstitute that practice. So, I would ask the Board if you would like to consider having that as a topic of discussion at a future meeting. Okay, we'll see that it gets added to an agenda for a future meeting. Okay. That's all I have under Board President comments. Can I get under Jeremy? And I think Dennis got the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, folks. Good night.